Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the workshop meeting this Tuesday, July the fifteenth. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Commissioner Marcus Alston, Vice Mayor Long.
Here.
Commissioner Casal.
Here.
Deputy Vice Mayor Burns.
Here.
Mayor Carney.
Here.
We have a question.
Thank you very much. First, turning over to City Manager for the first workshop item.
Yes, and I would like to offer a summary of both items if I may. So the first item is fiscal year's 2026 through 2030 Capital Improvement Program budget considerations. So, working closely with the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance, we are providing an overview in terms of what the vision will be in that regard. However, the primary focus of today's workshop meeting involves the annual presentations by city-supported nonprofit organizations. I would also like to share with the commission that I just received confirmation literally three, four minutes ago that the Delray Rocks Organization has submitted the necessary agreement for services to continue their relationship with the city of Delray Beach, and that's actually been included as well. However, they are not included as part of this evening's presentation simply because we had yet to receive an agreement. Now that they have been diligent in getting an executed agreement to the city of Delray Beach for that collaboration, we will provide them with an opportunity to address the commission at another time. However, today we have the nonprofit representatives from the Boys and Girls Club, Spady Cultural Heritage Museum, Achievement Center, Sendaway Discovery Center, Delray Beach Historical Society, and the Delray Beach Public Library. So, we anticipate that they'll begin their dialogue circa three thirty this afternoon or so. Meanwhile, I'd like to give Director of Public Works, Missy Barletto, an opportunity to provide the capital improvement program overview, and we will go from there. Ms. Barletto, if you would, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I have with me my backup singer for this year, who is Chief Financial Officer, Henry Dackowitz. He is a PIP. So, let's get started. So, as I show you every single year, this is the division of the CIP budget, which this year amounts to two hundred and ninety-five million, four hundred and twelve dollars, four hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. So that is up from last year by about forty-five million or so. The bulk of that is included in the funds for the new water treatment plant, which you can see is shown on the pie chart up there in gray, as well as increased funding for the Parks and Recreation Government Obligation Bond and the Public Safety Government Obligation Bond. This shows the division by department with utilities being nearly half of the capital improvement program budget. Those funds are being utilized for predominantly the new water treatment plant. Following up behind that, Development Services has about ten million dollars in the building fund budget that will be utilized for renovating office space to create a better environment here at City Hall. Fire has a very small slice. Parks and Rec has twenty-seven million for a variety of issues, including those that are covered by the government obligation bond. Police has a small slice, and Public Works makes up the second-largest slice for those ongoing projects, which we'll talk about a little bit more in depth later. So, budget highlights. In this year's capital improvement budget, you'll find that we're requesting dollars for parking infrastructure projects, playground updates, building division reconfiguration, management of our beach programs, Pompe Park construction, Northwest Neighborhood improvements is starting in a big way in the coming year, Southwest Neighborhood improvements. Those are a couple of small catch-all projects that we're doing this year because they can't wait for the overall larger neighborhood improvement project. Our Transportation Planning Agency projects at Lindell Boulevard, the Brant Bridge Connector, which carries the bicycle and pedestrian improvements from Brant Bridge out to Lindell Boulevard to make that loop complete. Barwick Road and Old Germantown Road. We've included funds in the budget this year for renovation of the Crest Theater Auditorium, a new med stat unit for the fire department, which will help to provide privacy for individuals who suffer issues during special events and other things. New turf at Hilltopper Stadium, another very small project, and new police department headquarters. That's a joke. A new water treatment plant, municipal golf course renovation. These are some of our much larger projects. We will begin construction of the Marine Way Seawall Roadway and Drainage Improvements Project this year. Thomas Street Pump Station rebuild has already started, and we'll also be starting on Tropic Isle Neighborhood. And, of course, the last item on the list is vehicle and equipment replacements. So, if you want to go through fund by fund, this is the Special Projects Fund. This is made up of a number of different sources. The ones that we're using this year is the Parking in Lou Fund, and also some funds that came in as a result of litigation with Atlantic Crossing to do a permanent road closure at Northeast Seventh Avenue and Northeast First Street. The Parking in Lou Funds are going to be utilized this year. We've had some of this conversation to replace the hydraulic units in the elevator, the second elevator at Old School Square Parking Garage with electric operating parts that will make that elevator more reliable and so that it does not break down during special events when it's heavily used and it's very hot outside. Some of the other things that we're looking at doing is purchasing parking meters, redesigning the railroad parking lot. Some of the asphalt there is failing. It needs to have a full-depth restoration. And also, that parking lot was originally designed at a time when people drove much larger cars, and we feel like we have the ability to redesign the layout of that parking lot to achieve more parking spaces in that same amount of property. The Recreation Impact Fee, this is a very small fund. This year is only going to be used to complete some additional playground updates. The Building Fund, we have touched on. This will be providing improved office space for the building department and looking at potentially even adding an additional building to the City Hall complex, which is something that we'll bring forward for commission discussion further out during the year. Beach Restoration, all of the funds that are required for the next storm repair of our beach are promised. They're in this year's budget. They're not in next year's budget. So you see a much smaller amount reflected here from last year. That project is currently still scheduled to begin in November. The General Construction Fund is made up of input from projects that are fully funded by the Community Redevelopment Agency, the CRA, as well as grant projects that are partially funded by the Transportation Planning Authority, as well as other grants. We have one federal grant here, the Safe Streets for All Transportation Action Plan, which we will be completing in the coming year, and that sets us up to be able to apply for additional federal highway funding for roadway projects in the future. But we first have to finish an action plan in order to be eligible to apply for implementation funds for some of those projects, which would include things like exit gates at the three railroad crossings in Delray Beach, which do not currently have them. Oh, before I move on, I did want to mention that the city was able to realize a legislative appropriation from the state this year in the amount of a million dollars in matching funds to complete our portion of the project at Gulf Stream Boulevard, which is a partnership with the city of Boynton Beach to improve that roadway. On their side of the eastbound side is in Delray Beach. The westbound side is in Boynton Beach. And on the Boynton Beach side, they also have some water and sewer improvements that they'll be doing. So, that project is more expensive on their side of the ledger than it is on ours. So, these are just a number of the projects that we have that are moving forward in the general construction, the expenses. All of this amounts to about six point six million dollars more than we have available in this fund. So, we will be coming back to you in future iterations of the capital improvement budget with options for how we make up that deficit in this fund. Oh, I didn't want to do that. I do not want to do that. Okay. This happens to me every time, as you all know. So, the government obligation bond for parks, this year we will be beginning to spend those funds. Athletic field lighting is at the top of the list. We will be doing a resurfacing of the walking trail at... Okay, the walking trail at the park in the Southwest Neighborhood. Hilltopper Stadium turf will be replaced this year with artificial turf. Catherine Strong Park. That is the name that just jumped right out of my head before. So we will be resurfacing that walking trail this year with the government obligation bond money. The Public Safety Government Obligation Bond, both of these bonds were approved by voters in 2021, or 2023, I mean. And this year, those funds will go toward beginning the design for the new police department headquarters. We will be doing some work at the Ocean Rescue Building, repairing locker room and storage improvements at that building and making more workable space for those folks. There are fire station one-eleven improvements, which include a new roof for the entire building, as well as some reconfiguration of the restroom facilities, which is similar to fire station one-twelve. We'll also be getting a new roof this year and new restroom facilities at fire station one-fifteen. So, on the water and sewer revenue side, the capital improvement project that the utilities department is contributing to is the Tropic Isle Neighborhood Improvements. Up until just half an hour before this meeting started, we were thinking that Representative Frankel had put in for five million dollars for the city for this project. We've been notified that the House Committee has approved the project at one point four five million. So there will be some changes in this slide as well. So, these are the projects that will be spent through the utilities department. Tropic Isle Neighborhood Improvements, they have water and sewer elements in the Historic Marine Way project, water treatment plant improvements, some pump station improvements, our annual contributions to the wastewater treatment plant that we share with Boynton Beach, and some generator replacements and safety grates for the lift stations. This is the water treatment plant. As you've already been very well versed in the bond issue for this, we are expecting to spend one hundred and twenty-five million in the coming year. At the Municipal Golf Course, we also will be beginning construction on the renovations to the golf course in November or December of this year. We expect to be spending about twenty-four and a half million dollars in the first year and another two and a half moving into the fiscal year twenty-seven. During this time, in addition to the Municipal Golf Course, we will also be renovating the clubhouse. This is the Lakeview Golf Course Enterprise Fund. They have a golf course storage barn that is in serious condition, and we will be replacing that in the coming year. And then Stormwater Utilities, the stormwater assessment that you just voted on to increase the amount will bring an additional two point two four million dollars into this fund, which is up from about a million dollars prior. We're looking at some grant funding, and then we're looking at doing either a loan from the State Revolving Loan Fund or a revenue bond also to cover the expenses in this fund. So the projects that we have moving forward this year for Stormwater Utility are the Historic Marine Way Seawall, Thomas Street Pump Station rebuild. Tropic Isle Neighborhood Improvements fall into this category. Replacement of all of the city's seawalls, which we expect to complete in the coming year, as well as minor drainage improvements along George Bush Boulevard, and an update of the Stormwater Master Plan. The City Garage, we expect to spend about seven point one two, about seven million, one hundred and twenty-five thousand in the coming year for both heavy equipment and vehicle replacements. This will all be done through a lease purchase program. This is the second lease purchase program, which we had talked with you about in prior years, which will allow us to continue to rebuild the fund so that hopefully in next year, we'll be able to come back and be back on a cash purchase foothold. And that is the entirety of the budget for this year. If you have any questions.
Commissioner Long?
No questions. Thanks so much, Missy.
Commissioner Burns?
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to get, I missed it on the PowerPoint. You said that you are showing a deficit of six million some...
In the General Construction Fund, we still have about six point six million dollars' worth of funds to identify a source for, but we are working on that, and the next time we bring the budget to you, we'll have answers for that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Casal?
Thanks. I was going to ask that for clarity as well. Excited that we're moving towards getting back to cash purchases. When you say that, it makes me smile, and I thank you. I had written to the city to ask, how much of this are we actually required to lay out this year based on matching? Because I'm curious where the flexibility is. Don't need that right this second, because I imagine you'll be producing that in the next meeting. But one thing, Missy, if you don't mind, Ms. Barletto, for clarity. When you do this process, this is not all the requests. This was something that we had talked about in the past. We used to get a binder, and sometimes we'd flip through it and say, "Do we really need another boat?" or something like that. But this is the bare bones request that you feel we need to be accomplishing going forward. Is that correct?
Yeah. The way that this process works, every year, every department submits to us their wish list for inclusion in the capital improvement program that includes everything from nice-to-have to have-to-have.
Right.
And then we meet individually with the department directors, and we hash out a priority list for them and talk to them about the items that they've submitted. So, on a normal year, we may get from one hundred and fifty to two hundred requests.
Right.
You can see that we may put thirty percent of those requests into an actual capital improvement budget. And that's done in a team effort where we work with each of the departments. We talk about what their priorities are. We talk about, does this have to happen this year? Can this be put off to next year? Is this something that we need to move forward with?
Right.
And so there are always, I know the one year you're talking about, I actually, as a transparency moment, at the very back of the book, I put in every single request. at the very back of the book, I put in every single request that we received that year, because it was well over 200. And yes, there was pushback.
Thank you. So that the residents understand the process has already been whittled down. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I like to see, I mean, a lot of these items have been waited for, for a long time. So, it's great that we're implementing them. And we look forward to working with you and trying to get all this accomplished. And I look forward to seeing how you fill that $6 million gap.
Henry's going to write me a check.
Well, I thought we should, we're going to get it from Rob, from the TPA. He's just going to have him write a check.
They've written me several.
Thank you very much, both of you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I would like to ask Assistant City Manager Jeff Forrest to please come forward so that he can facilitate the annual presentations by leadership of nonprofit partners relative to funding considerations and the existing agreements as we move forward. Ms. Forrest, if you would, please.
Good afternoon. Jeff Forrest, Assistant City Manager. Mayor and Commissioners, as you know, each year, we invite the nonprofits, which the city gives grant dollars to, to make a presentation on what they've done in the previous year. This year, of course, is no exception. All six of these agencies are present today and have presentations to give to you. We ask them to give you a 10-minute presentation. We leave about five minutes for question and answer, should you have any questions. So, this should take up the time up until the beginning of the regular meeting. So, you can see in your backup information that I have indicated how much money each organization gets, and we can move through them quickly in quick order. So, I would ask the, oh, yes, ma'am.
Could I just ask a question? I think we had this exchange in email, but just to clarify, these are just the requests, not consistent, not inclusive of the A-Guide program funding that other organizations, some of the organizations.
That is correct, Commissioner.
Correct. Thank you.
We ask the groups to come forward and give us a look back at what they've done.
Back.
Hence, the reason we only have those that we funded this year.
Okay, and the request for the current. Thank you.
Up first is Boys and Girls Club, and they have a representative here who can give you their presentation and answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Pablo Tejada. I'm the Chief Impact Officer for Palm Beach County Boys and Girls Club, and just want to thank the city of Delray and the county commissioners and other city officials for allowing us to present today. Want to start with our mission, because that's where everything starts. To enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. This is going forward. Where did we go back? Oh, no, no. This is, how do you? It's not letting me go back.
That's a fast presentation. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, I was about to say, that was pretty quick.
The clicker always trips up everybody.
So, our organization has a formula for impact in terms of what we do every day with children. Obviously, our most important aspect of our work is keeping every child safe, but also creating a positive environment with supportive, healthy relationship with these adults that we hire and create as much meaningful experiences so that we work on what we say is four aspects of every child. Health and well-being, character and leadership, academic success. And we really emphasize, especially with teenagers, life and workforce readiness. Boys and Girls Club of Palm Beach County, we're in 20 locations in Palm Beach County. And from the Glades all the way to Jupiter, down to Boca, as well as, most importantly, Delray. We have total 9,134 members at Delray. Actually, 616 kids and young people attend. It's actually our fastest-growing club ever since we hired this young manager. Get to listen to in a few minutes. 51 weeks out of the year. We open during the school day from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m., and then the summer is from 7:30 to 6:00 p.m. And the only thing that we ask for every family is a $30 membership fee. $30 for their whole entire year. It's basically their commitment to basically be all in to ensure that their kids are going to show up and get the full experience. And then I'd like to introduce what we consider to be one of our rising stars, Frankie, who is actually the executive club director of our Delray site.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. Well, I just want to say good afternoon. Amazing afternoon. It's been literally about a year since I've last spoken to you guys. And the last Frankie that stood up here was a little nervous. But the Frankie that's up here now is extremely confident. Reason being is, since I've been there a year, we magnified our programming, especially with STEM. So, what we've been doing is we've been synergizing with other organizations. For example, like FAU. FAU comes out, and they do Mindful Minds or Mobile Minds. They come out, they help the kids with hands-on training with the neuroscience. So, these are things that I didn't have access to. And last time we spoke, I told you, my vision and my goal is to provide these kids not only with programming, but programming that I didn't have access to myself, that I felt like was going to change the whole perspective. Sports, we also tapped in with sports. We had a boxing program where our kids did not learn boxing. They actually learned the fundamentals, how to control their anger, how to use their anger and channel it and redirect themselves. So, boxing, when you think about boxing, a lot of people think boxing is just punching and fighting and winning a bag. It's totally different from that. Great question. Someone asked, how did you choose those kids? So, throughout the whole year, we've been speaking about the boxing program, and we synergize with Delray Beach Boxing. And what we did was, a lot of the kids that were getting behavioral issues, instead of just suspending them, we redirected them to a program that probably helped them. And we had 10 to 12 kids that graduated last week from that four-week program, which is great. Flag football, we're introducing flag football to our girls as well. The guys, of course, they're tapping in with that. We have soccer, we have basketball, all that you can name. Cultural arts, cultural arts has been an amazing program that we've been also tapping in. What I've been realizing is, our young boys have been getting real artistic, artsy with themselves. We have Ms. Christine that comes in, that taps in with our cultural arts. Cultural arts is not just really painting or creating different types of cartoons. And we dive deep into that, deep, deep, deep into that. We can get into that later on. Character development and leadership. Our Career Bound Program helps with that as well. Family support, that's one of our major reasons why we've been driving our success at Delray Beach Boys and Girls Club. Last time I spoke to you guys, I told you all the disconnect was more so the Haitian population, the Haitian community. So, with help with Mr. Pablo and the team, what we've been doing is, we've been hands-on, knocking on doors, letting people know, hey, last Saturday of the month, we're giving out food to 400 to 500 families. We've been doing that since January. We also help with other resources that we may have. The parents that come in and say, hey, I don't have access to food on Mondays or Tuesdays or over the weekends. We'll partner up with Boca Helping Hands, we drop off food, 250 boxes of food every Friday. That way, our kids can have access to good quality food over the weekend. So, again, it takes a family, it takes a village. Academic enrichment, mental health, and workforce readiness. Feel like that all ties in, into each other. The mental health part, I really want to tap in, especially to everybody that's in here. Make sure you take care of your mental health, right? Now, as you take care of your mental health, also listen to what the kids are saying. Sometimes they might, they may not be speaking to you in a form of words. They may be speaking to you in what they're watching on their phones. So, these are things that I'm picking up and I'm able to share with the parents when we have parent meetings. What I'm realizing is, without having these types of organizations, grassroots organizations that's in these communities, it's very, very hard for constituents to speak to you guys, especially when it comes down to the kids, because they're working two or three jobs themselves. So, we become, in a sense, their voice. We become their voice, we become their sense of light. So, our blue doors is not just doors that they come in in this after-school program. Aside from these programs, we're family. So, I stand here proudly as the Executive Club Director and saying, thank you guys for your support. I stand proudly in the next year and do the same thing. And the more and more we'll have opportunities to present to you guys, the more and more we can exceed expectations.
I just want to share a couple pitches. We actually bust every kid in. We do the academics. You'll see some pitches related to dance. Specifically, we do a ton of STEM and robotics at the clubs. Arts and craft, they get to use the computer labs. Drumming, as well as basketball, but sports in general. And then just want to say, thank everyone, you know? We try to get the kids to dream big but work hard. And on behalf of all the kids, we just want to thank you for all your support. Appreciate you all.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Any questions?
Any questions from any member up here? You may make a comment, too.
I have no questions but comments. So, I just want to thank you for being here today and more importantly, for the work that you do with our students and our community. Are all of the students from Delray? The 606 students?
Majority.
616. That is a question.
That is a question. Okay, so, but, so, most of them are from Delray? And that's an impressive number, and as I said, congratulations. And quite impressed with your programs that you offer. You are administering to the whole child, which is very important. Academics is great, but the whole child, and just thank you for what you do.
One thing I wanted to add, we have close to, I think, 48 partners, partner organizations that come to Delray Boys and Girls Club. Today, we had Christ Fellowship. Fellowship, they brought like 40 young people to come in to actually do tutoring with our little ones. So, we don't do this by ourselves. It's a community effort with a lot of partners.
Thank you. And so, yeah, this, you know, just a vital role that nonprofit organizations take care of, that fill in that gaps that government can't do. And 51 weeks, you get a week off, so thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anything else?
I have a question.
Thank you.
May I grab a candy? Can I grab a piece of candy that's up here?
Oh, yeah, sure.
I appreciate you.
Have a great day, everyone. Thank you.
Mayor, I will say, the last time I was over at the Boys and Girls Club, the facility was packed. And the energy level was really high. It was kind of exciting, actually. I'd like to ask our next group to come up. That would be Spady Cultural Heritage Museum. And I know Charlene is starting off with a little video, so.
How do I make it start?
Our IT folks have got, they're on top of it. Can hit play on it.
During the 2024-2025 fiscal year, this year, the Spady Museum hosted three exhibits. The life of OZ Youngblood, Delray Beach's first Black City Commissioner, is showing in the Williams Cottage and consists of several items from his personal collection. Inside-Outside featured the artwork of Eyes Gabriel and his commentary on the Black experience in America. Water Works Distillations, now showing, depicts South Florida African-Americans' relationship with water and includes Palm Beach County history. For our collections, we received a donated painting by notable artist Doc Strash. He is credited for perfecting carborundum prints, and the Philadelphia Museum of Art holds a substantial collection of Doc Strash works. Our annual commemorative events were held and were very successful. You will see clips from Juanza, the Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, a Delray Beach family affair, which is the kickoff of emancipation season, and Juneteenth, which is the end of emancipation season. We hosted workshops including cooking, sewing, photography, and mural painting. We hosted forums with topics such as preserving our history, Pearl City, and Rosewood. Our newest lecture series is called Afternoon Insights that features local history told by those who either studied it or lived it. Our plan for next year is to continue to be a good partner of the city of Delray Beach and a good steward of the Spady House and the Williams Cottage. We will do our very best to maintain as many of our current programs as possible and might-have cuts in federal and state support. We will continue to collaborate for maximum reach, and we will continue to represent Black culture in Palm Beach County. Finally, we'll also continue to support the personal growth of our board and staff, members and guests by bringing people together around Black history.
So, how did you like my AI voice? That's me playing with AI. As we know, meaningful partnerships, such as the one we have with the city of Delray Beach, as well as collaborations with other organizations, enable us to extend our reach beyond our budgets. Our collaborations have allowed us to discuss and promote our beautiful city to audiences far and wide who respect the importance of the multicultural nature of our local municipalities. We intend to continue those relationships and focus on expanding our reach with our message of living and learning together. This has been a successful year for the Spady Museum's programmatic staff and a challenging year for management. The number of people we are engaging with at our museum with our programming has grown, and we're committed to deepening those relationships while quietly helping others to realize their goals. We hired a museum educator this year, and she's doing a wonderful job. Her name is Fabiola Bernier. We solidified our paid and unpaid student intern programs this year, and the extra help has been invaluable to meeting the needs of our guests. So much so, that there's no more room for me inside the museum building. So, if you drive by and see me on the sidewalk, you know, working on a TV tray, that's why. Each success brings us closer to our vision of a vibrant community where everyone understands and appreciates the contributions of Black people in America. Management has been challenged with finding ways to mitigate the loss of critical funding. National and state funding cuts to the tune of $155,000 in our case have brought out the creative thinking in us all. We've always been resilient and creative, so we are confident that we will weather this shifting and sifting of financial support for what we think is a critical need in our society, and that is the preservation of our history. And we know we're not alone in this thinking. I would like to state publicly for the record how grateful the Spady Museum is to everyone who stepped up to support us in preserving and sharing our history. That includes you, city commissioners, and the Delray Beach city staff. I shared with you our P&amp;L statement expenses year-to-date. It's right on top of what I just sent out. I wanted to give you a clear picture of how the funding support from the city and that from the CRA was used this year. And I want to validate that if funded, it will be allocated again as shown on the reports that I sent you. It's pretty straightforward, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that. This year-to-date, the Spady Museum's staff greeted and toured approximately 4,000 people at the Spady House and Williams Cottage. Each tour lasts an average of two hours, and they are always guided and often curated based on what the visitor is seeking. And because we are a very small venue, approximately 60% of our visitation is scheduled, which is the only way we can accommodate our numbers. That number combines the exhibit, bus, and walking tours, as well as the school groups. In addition, we hosted another 320 attendees at our MLK brunch in January, and another 722 people attended our special forums and lectures. Our outreach speaking engagements and traveling exhibits to Palm Beach County and Broward County locations increased the numbers of people that we see and interact with by several thousand. We welcomed 10 school groups this year, ages kindergarten to graduate students. Three schools from Delray Beach, one from Belglade, three from Boca Raton, one from Boynton Beach, one from Coral Springs, and one from Lake Worth. In addition to our regular roster of scheduled programs and exhibitions, staff has been working with other organizations in Palm Beach County on special projects that first and foremost support our mission and vision, but that also help others to achieve their goals. With Delray Beach's historic preservation planners and community members, we are continuing our work on our beloved Frog Alley Historic District. In October, the Cornell Museum invited us to be part of their exhibition of notable Palm Beach County residents. A reimagined painting of a young Solomon Spady, painted by artist Serge Strasberg, was included in their exhibit. The collaboration resulted in Serge gifting us the painting, and we're grateful to the Cornell Museum for making that happen. Thank you, Maruska. With the Arts Garage, back in November, we welcomed the Grammy Award-winning band Ranky- With the Arts Garage, back in November, we welcomed the Grammy Award-winning band Ranky Tanky for a concert in celebration of the Gullah Geechee culture. I'm grateful to my Ms. Marjorie for using her skills in negotiation to make that event happen. Thank you, Marjorie. In February, the Palm Beach County Remembrance Coalition held a soil ceremony for Henry Simmons, a Black man killed in West Palm Beach. The Board of County Commissioners proclaimed June third, twenty twenty-five to be Henry Simmons Day. The Remembrance Coalition is working with the Equal Justice Initiative in Montgomery, Alabama, to honor the two Palm Beach County men who were killed by racial terror lynchings between eighteen seventy-seven and nineteen fifty. There's more information about this program and the following programs in what I just sent you, just gave you. The architectural firm Bora Architects was selected to work with the Palm Beach County School District's architectural firm on the development of the African American Museum and Research Library in West Palm Beach. This project is planned for the Roosevelt High School site in West Palm. The current estimated date of completion, twenty twenty-eight. The Palm Beach County Black Cultural Heritage Trail Phase One is complete and can be explored on the Cultural Council's website. This project is a result of the collaboration of multiple historic organizations around the county. We are working on adding more historical sites to the mix and we are evaluating ways to enable our visitors and residents to enjoy the trail on their own. The last project that I'll report on today is our brand-new mission-driven program called Black History Study, Palm Beach County. The Spady Museum launched this cultural education program last year and invited the Palm Beach County African Diaspora Historical and Cultural Society to collaborate. Both organizations believe that it's important for all of us to know the history of our country. Our program teaches American history, I'm almost done, coupled with African history, because no country's an island, accented with cultural field trips, and expressed by artistic projects. This program is open to the public at all times in Delray Beach and in West Palm Beach. And year two will begin on September thirteenth. Registration is open. In conclusion, Delray Beach is a village by the sea. But in addition to that, a mixture of Caribbean and indigenous cultures infuse the language, food, entertainment, crafts, and spiritual practices of Delray Beach and add to its cultural landscape. Visitors tell us that this translates to a welcoming environment for guests and new residents of our town who seek positive experiences infused with Delray Beach's special brand of cultural context. We are happy to be part of the cultural fabric of our town and we are grateful to you for your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Burns, any questions? Or comments?
Just to say thank you for your presentation and as a proud member of the Spady Cultural Museum, these are some exciting programs that you have. I'm excited about reading some of these that will be coming before the commission and some of the other places, however. And just thank you for doing what you do, for having a one-of-a-kind institution that's for our county. So thank you.
Commissioner Cassal?
Thank you.
Ms. Yelma?
Great presentation.
Thank you.
You know, I don't think most people realize that this is the only, really, museum in Palm Beach County dedicated to the Black history and, you know, it, and the people that were involved in its activities expanded well beyond Delray Beach.
Oh, yes.
And I think that's such an important thing and it's, 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 it's always delightful to see you and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Charlie. Mayor Commissioners, I'd like to invite our next group up, which is Achievement Center. Certainly, they're represented and have a nice presentation for you as well.
All right, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm proud to represent the Achievement Centers for Children and Families, a nonprofit organization deeply rooted in Delray Beach for over fifty-five years. I should have tested this before I got up here. Okay. I'm here with our COO, Jalisa Werden, and we're excited to share our highlights for the coming year. Achievement Centers has remained steadfast in our mission to nurture a collaborative community where children are inspired to reach their full potential and families serve as the foundation of their growth. We're particularly proud of our longstanding partnership with the city of Delray Beach. Your continued support has helped us grow and serve generations of children and families. Our journey began in nineteen sixty-nine with the support from First Presbyterian Church. In nineteen ninety, the city donated the land for our first building on our campus, our preschool. In two thousand, or nineteen ninety, I'm sorry, in two thousand and four, let it date, the city invited us to partner in running the out-of-school programs at Village Academy. And in two thousand and thirteen, we were asked again to expand into Pine Grove Elementary. Today, we operate across three campuses. We hold a formal operational agreement with the school district of Palm Beach County to provide out-of-school and summer camp programs at both Title I schools, Village Academy, and Pine Grove. Annually, we serve over seven hundred and fifty children, with sixty-three percent living right here in Delray Beach. We serve many hardworking families, some working multiple jobs, and we're proud to offer scholarships and affordable programs that remove barriers, ensuring every child has access to quality early childhood education and quality out-of-school time care. Achievement Centers is nationally accredited. We hold multiple certifications and accreditations. Our early learning program has held the prestigious NACI accreditation, the National Education for the, National Association for the Education of Young Children, and we've held that accreditation for over thirty years. Our out-of-school time programs are accredited by Apple, Green Apple, and our business practices are also accredited through Nonprofits First, where we hold the highest level of certification for excellence in nonprofit management. Achievement Centers offers comprehensive program and services for all ages. Our services begin in our early learning program with children as young as one-year-old. And children, as children transition into elementary school, they can continue with us along their journey through our after-school and summer camp programs. For middle and high school students, we offer a teen program that's also open on Fridays and Saturday evenings. And to support families, we provide a range of stability services tailored to each individual family's needs. I'm sorry, I'm getting over a cold and I'm working really hard not to cough into the microphone. All right. All right, as I mentioned earlier, Jalisa, our chief operations officer is with me today. She oversees many, many moving parts and a very large team. And she is going to take you a little bit further into detail about our programs and our impact.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I'll start off with our out-of-school time programming. It's our largest program that spans over three campuses and operates year-round. Quality out-of-school time is critical for children because it supports holistic development beyond the classroom. What we provide is a safe, supportive environment to allow children to grow academically, socially, emotionally, through enriching activities like tutoring, recreation, and arts such as our step and drumline teams. And of course, our programs also support working families with care for their children so they can work. Everyday Impact. We are really proud of the work we do and the impact of our work in the community. Last year, we provided nearly twenty-five hundred service hours in early childhood education, nearly fifteen hundred service hours through our out-of-school programs, and over two hundred and seventy weekend hours for our teens. We also employ eighty-five staff members, with thirty-eight of them being Delray Beach residents, and we contribute to the local economy with nearly one point five million in wages staying here in Delray Beach. One of our most important aspects of our program is our meals program. Last year, we served over a hundred and sixty-five free meals, including hot breakfasts, lunches, dinners, and snacks, supporting food security and child wellness. Our early learning program is where we started our journey fifty-five years ago and still remains a cornerstone, cornerstone to our work today. Early childhood education is especially important for children in under-resourced families because it provides a strong foundation in language, socio-emotional, and cognitive development during the most critical years of their growth. At our center, we have credentialed, highly-trained staff that ensure our children receive developmentally appropriate care and instruction. We're also proud to highlight our partnership with the school district that provides a special needs resource teacher to support children with IEPs in our classrooms. Our impact in our early child, in early child learning. We all know the importance of early learning and the role, the role it plays in setting the foundation for academic success. A hundred percent of the children in our early learning program receive developmental screenings to catch potential developmental delays as soon as possible. And in our VPK programs, over eighty percent of our students score ready for kindergarten according to the Star Literacy Assessment. Our teen program within the last year has grown exponentially, with now we serve over a hundred and seventy-seven teens and they're enrolled in our programming. This program is designed to help teens grow. They get to explore leadership opportunities, learn job skills, participate in peer mentoring, community services, and of course, they get to go on cool field trips. Now, this is our newest initiative over the last year with the city. I hope you guys have all heard about HackTivate by now. But through HackTivate, our teens in our program got to study the city's comprehensive plan, meet with city officials over six months, and they study local issues and data that the city provided us with. We had an event, I want to say it was in May of this year, where the students got to make policy recommendations on issues like climate change, affordable housing, and mental health. This is civic engagement in action and we want to thank the city for welcoming our voices. Thank you, Jeff, for spending the day with us. It was a long day. Teen Impact. Last year, we had a, we launched our teen internship program. We had twenty-eight paid internships, ten were internal within our organization, and eighteen were placed with partners, including other Delray Beach nonprofits. And then one of our most, one of our most critical programs supporting our families is our Family Support Program. It's led by a director of social emotional wellness who is also a licensed social work, social worker. This team provides support to families in times of needs and we also partner with mental health agencies for both the families and the children. Now, this team plays a vital role in strengthening families and creating stability for the children. We're able to offer caregivers access to resources such as counseling, skill-building workshops, help with basic needs so they are better equipped to support their own children's development and their needs. We also offer financial assistance through special grants when funding allows. This program not only helps families navigate challenges, but also promotes resilience, reduce stress, and improves overall family well-being. Last year, our Family Support Team provided over nine hundred linkages and referrals. We had over six hundred people attend our monthly workshops and we had two hundred and five families on case management within our organization. Fifty of our families received financial emergency assistance beyond our normal holiday activities. And lastly, we hosted three social work interns who collectively contributed four hundred hours of service at our center.
All right, Achievement Centers is a large volunteer site with notable community engagement. We mobilized over six hundred volunteers last year, logging nearly two thousand hours with an added value of over sixty-five thousand dollars coming into our organization, a reflection of the community spirit that defines Delray Beach. Achievement Centers also hosts its own unique fundraising events each year, like the Delray Beach Witch's Ride for over three hundred riders and the Delray Beach Home Tour for over six hundred guests annually. These, and I think it's safe to say iconic, events raise nearly three hundred thousand dollars for our center and bring the community together always for a good cause. So looking ahead, our priorities this coming year, we are focused on three main priorities aimed at deepening our impact, upgrading our facilities, and advancing our mission. We recently launched the Empowered Program. It's a targeted academic support initiative with one-on-one tutoring and small group instruction. To oversee this initiative, we have hired a part-time academic program coordinator, who's also a reading specialist within the Palm Beach County School District. And we hope with this funding, we will be able to hire this person on full-time through a multi, multi-year grant. With three aging buildings and a lot of use in and out on every door and in every classroom, our facilities are showing wear and tear. So in order to stay ahead of our needs, we're proactively investing in facility upgrades. And this will come through a deep facility, thorough facilities audit, followed by the design of a funding plan that we expect to span over the next couple of years. And finally, we're in the last year of our strategic plan. We'll soon embark on a new strategic planning process to tuck the course for the next three to five years to come. In closing, we thank you, all of you, the city commission and the city staff, for your continued trust, collaboration, and shared vision. And we're really honored to be part of the city's ecosystem of support of children and families in our community. So thank you. Any questions?
Any members of the commission, Mr. Cullen? Commissioner Burns?
Yeah, just thank you for, for what you're doing, for the, the children that you serve. I did want to ask, do you, the, the stu, I appreciate your early learning program because it's very important for the success of children once they start school. However, do you track, and it's probably, probably not, but what schools your students go to? Do they, are they scattered about all schools in Delray, or do you notice that they are going to specific schools?
Oh, we have a formal data-sharing agreement with the school district that allows us to see through the district's portal where students go. They're assigned a number. We know many of our students stay with us and go into one of our after-school programs, typically Pine Grove or Village Academy.
Okay.
Commissioner Long?
No questions. Great presentation.
Thank you.
As you, as you know, I've been participating with the house tour since the very first one. And, and I was so happy to see two hundred thousand this past year. It's quite, I remember how it first got it started. It was, it was, you know, and the hard work that's been done by, I take a lot of credit. It's really my wife and the rest of the volunteers, as you know, so I, but I'll take all the credit.
We appreciate that. She was, yeah.
So Lucy's the one who's the star, but it's really such a great, it's, and you're doing everything right. So that, that's, it's, it's, I'm happy to, I'm happy to help you in ways we can, because you're doing everything right.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mayor, may, may I make a quick comment?
Of course.
As Jalisa had mentioned, I showed up to their HackTivate. It was one Saturday. One Saturday, and I'm thinking, I'll just stop by, show a little support. Those kids were so engaging. I stayed the entire day. I couldn't leave. They, they just, they did a great job both in presenting their information and in supporting one another. Couple of kids a little nervous about getting up and making a presentation, but the rest of them were so supportive. It was really incredible to watch and I look forward to doing it again next year.
Thank you.
Can I hold you to it, Jeff?
Thank you both. Thank you both very much.
Our next presentation is from the Sandaway Discovery Center and Denise Kassamborn is here to make that presentation, who I should also mention was a part of our team out in Denver for the All-America City Award.
That was a lot of fun. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to discuss, to discuss all the great accomplishments Sandaway has done over the past year, including the All-American City. All right, hopefully I won't do this wrong. We're going to start with a big-picture overview. The numbers you're going to see represent real lives touched by our mission, which is to inspire visitors and students through experiential conservation education and to become stewards of the environment. This year, we welcomed over seventeen thousand visitors. That does not include our school field trips. All of these visitors come in the afternoons. We changed our hours a couple of years ago so that we could better accommodate the schools in the morning. We were getting some complaints since we're a small facility that we were packing too many people in there. So now in the mornings, we dedicate our time to the school groups and in the afternoons, we dedicate our time to the visitors. And this way, we're able to be out on the floor, talking with each and every person that comes in so that they leave with a message of conservation, which is really important to us. Seems to be working well. We get a lot of repeat visitors. Every afternoon, we teach thousands, not every afternoon, but throughout the whole year, through our public programs, including our shark and stingray feedings, our aquarium feedings, animal encounters, and then our special programs, discovery series, and young scientist programs. We also have touch tanks that are open throughout those times. So everyone that comes, they can stay for the full four hours, or they can just stay for one of the programs, but they owe. for one of the programs, but they always get something when they come there. So, we are focused on our next generation through our students. One of our best programs is our Junior Naturalist Program. This year, we taught over five thousand three hundred eight students. Three thousand seven hundred eleven of those were from Title I schools or from underserved communities. That's over seventy percent of the students that we see, which is really amazing. And not one of those students is charged any money to come there. We raise funds so that they can come there, and if they need help with transportation, we raise funds for that as well. Many of these people that come here, our students, have never seen the ocean before. A lot of them live within three miles of it and have never seen it. So, it's really amazing to see their eyes, to watch them touch a stingray, and they're learning to be good stewards of the environment. We get a lot of thank you cards. I just put this one up there because it's really cute, and it's an amazing shark drawing. So, I mean, these are young kids. This is a fourth grader, and they, they know how to draw better than I do. One of our newest programs, we're really proud of this one. What we wanted to do was make sure that we were helping out our students, or our teachers. We always hear how much they have on their plates, but we don't hear how we can help them. So, we wanted to help them with science. What we always hear is they're, they're focused on reading and writing and math, so the science sort of takes a back burner. A lot of times, because they're scared to teach it as well, they don't know it as well. So, we reached out, at the time, it was Tom Slinski. He's the K through five science program planner for Palm Beach County Schools, and he sent us a list of over forty schools that were not doing very well on their, on their science standardized testing. Some of them were scoring an eight percent. So, that's where we, we stepped in. We said, can we narrow that down and figure out pieces of these tests that they're really doing the worst on? And he said, plants. So, we made a whole program that has to do with plants. We bring the, we targeted five schools this year. That was four hundred students. We brought them to our center, totally paid for, and we taught them plant structure, reproduction, photosynthesis, and pollination. We provided transportation for over three hundred seventy-nine students through that program as well. And we just started to get those test scores back, and they went up in this particular one. So, we're very, very proud of that. And we hope to increase this, now that we can show that it really does work. We hope to increase it to more schools next year. And we also have these really neat three-D program computer models that we bring out to them, because once we, we have them come out once, we go out to them multiple times so that, that we review the, the program over and over again. So, when they see it on the test, it's second nature, nature to them. We taught six hundred eighty-four students through our Nature Series Outreach Program. That's the aftercare, so it's places here in Delray, like the Achievement Center, Paul's Place. We've done Fuller Center, and of course, the Delray Beach Aftercare. So, we bring eight programs to them throughout the year. And we also taught over seven hundred students through our Roots and Wings Partnership, and that was a reward. Roots and Wings is a program that teaches literacy to children, and they wanted to reward all them. So, we went to their, so, gosh, I think it was fifteen or twenty schools, and we did programs for them as a reward for doing so well with their reading. Environmental education isn't limited to the classroom. We're out in the field, cleaning beaches, protecting wildlife, and contributing to Delray's international recognition for sustainability. We partner with the City of Delray Beach on two big beach cleanups a year, removing hundreds of pounds of garbage from Delray's beaches. We partner with the City again, and EAI, on sea turtle nest excavations and hatchling releases. We did one this past week, and we had a lot of hatchlings. Everyone was very happy. We also partner with the City of Delray Beach to provide environmental education activities to secure our Blue Flag certification again this year, which is amazing. None of this would be possible without the incredible dedication of our volunteers and interns who share our passion and energy for conservation. And we hired two new employees, our new aquarist, Alyssa Frank, and naturalist Candy Holzeger. And we trained and developed interns and volunteers. Throughout the year, we have about thirty-five volunteers that are amazing. We could not do any of this without them. And this year, we have three interns, which really isn't, is a nice way to help with the workload. These are young kids that are looking for, you know, ways to boost up their resume, and they're absolute superstars. We've also continued our partnership with EJS, and we have two great interns this year. You can see them both there, Josiah and Patrick, and we'll continue with them as long as they'll have us. We've made big upgrades to our facility to enhance both education and conservation. Each, each space is learning an opportunity for our visitors. We've rebuilt our reptile and amphibian room, so it looks less like something you would have at your house. We constructed an artificial reef of the Enchilva from one of our shark tanks, which is bringing local history to life and educating about the importance of artificial reefs in our oceans. We beautified our garden, which we use in a lot of our educational classes. And we also moved Maggie outside. We built a new gopher tortoise enclosure, and she loves it. Oh, my gosh, she cannot stop digging. She actually dug out, and we had to find her. So, we've had to secure that a little more than we thought. She gave us a good scare there, but we found her. You can come visit her. These milestones reflect the support of our community and the growing recognition of Sandaway as a leader in environmental education. We've raised over sixty thousand dollars during our annual Muscle on the Beach fundraiser. We hope to do that again next year, if not more. We won the medium nonprofit of the year award this year. And we started construction on our new porch, which is, has been a two-year endeavor so far. We're about a month and a half away from completion, we hope. The window should be in next week. As you can see, this is part of the construction, but our wood was all rotted. It was unusable space. Maggie didn't like it, so we took her advice. We moved her outside. We had a matching grant from the Cultural Council. They gave us, the whole project's going to cost around two hundred sixty thousand. They're donating a hundred thirty through the grant, and we raised the additional a hundred thirty thousand dollars. So, we're very excited for this, along with Charlene. I also work in one office with about five other people, so now I don't have to call, I won't have to call payroll out in my car anymore, so I can actually do it from an office. So, here's some more pictures. They just laid the concrete pad a couple of weeks ago. So, your support helps us inspire the next generation to protect our planet. We're honored to serve the Delray Beach community and look forward to an even bigger impact in the coming year. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Crissell?
I would say thank you, and I think this doesn't just go to your organization, but all of you presenting to us today. We've been sitting up here, working together, trying to figure out how can we improve the quality of our education, and a lot of what we, our takeaway is we need to invest in organizations like yours, like all of you here today, because you're helping us. And I love seeing these presentations, because we really don't know that the kids are struggling with the science issue of plants, identifying them. And you just created a program around it and worked to help them, and I really want to thank you and everybody here today, you know, for making our city better and for helping our kids. I'm excited for these presentations, and I thank you.
Commissioner Burns?
Same. Just want to say thank you, and, and five thousand three hundred eight students, you know, that's very impressive. I know that in the schools, field trips have either been eliminated or limited. So, this is great that you're serving that many students with these subject areas, you know, STEM, STEAM, science is very much needed. And I was going to say that I want to make sure I tell my daughter about this, but I saw her in the picture, so.
Oh, you did?
So, yes.
Oh, my gosh!
So, she brought her class. That was, yeah, she's the one sitting up in the corner over there in her class. So, she brought her class to the center.
I did not. That's funny.
I didn't. I didn't. I didn't know. I just saw, I was like, oh, I saw two people I recognized. I saw the back of Mr. Bennett's son head, and I saw my daughter sitting in there.
That is funny.
Totally surprised me there. But thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Long?
I, I, of course, echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and congrats on the Hats Off Award. That's awesome. That's a big deal. No, you guys do amazing work. Thank you so much for doing it for the community, and great presentation.
I, I, I know for a fact, because I met one of the kids during the campaign, just how much they learn at your place. It's an incredible amount of information you get, and because they are really engaged in what you're doing, they remember it all.
Yes.
So, it, it, you'd have a great program there, and I go to the car show every year to help support you too, so.
Thank you.
But anyway, great work, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's free. I hope you're giving a donation.
Always on the list.
Congratulations on your porch as well.
Yes.
I know that was meant to be.
Oh, yeah. The porch, I saw that porch pre-this, and.
This will be much better.
Well, you won't fall through when you walk in. That's probably the better.
That has happened, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, our next presentation is from Winnie Edwards from the Delray Beach Historical Society. I'd also like to mention Winnie also joined us in Denver, so she was a great team member there.
Our honor.
For sure.
Is the, where's the, is it this?
Yeah.
And which button? The big white one?
Big white one, take it forward or back, depending on which side.
Thank you, thank you. Hi. Good afternoon, Commissioners, city staff, and friends. My name's Winnie Edwards. I'm Executive Director of the Delray Beach Historical Society. Thank you for inviting us here today and allowing us to share our yearly update with you. We signed our charter in nineteen sixty-four, and next year will be our fortieth year working with you, the city. We're so proud of our steady growth, and today is a great day to recognize how dedicated our community has been, especially city leadership, to preserving our history. All three of our historic cottages on our one-acre downtown campus are jewels in Delray. It bears repeating that two of them were saved from demolition, and our award-winning Learning Center built in nineteen oh eight is the oldest farmhouse in Delray Beach, the home of the city archives. Our mission is to encourage and to inspire us all to look back at our history and the people who lived here, to study, to be surprised, to be moved, to start a dialogue, to question and to gain understanding about sometimes tough topics and memorable achievements. We're sharing these captures today because each face is attached to a family, an historical milestone, an unbelievable tale, or a magnificent story, all the things that made Delray what it is today. Our city archive is an important place, holding over a hundred and fifty thousand items in it, all professionally managed, upholding the highest of archiving standards. Our mission, too, is to remain mindful of change, progress, technology trends, and a changing demographic, and to strategically insert local history into the conversations as a powerful reminder of what came before, whether it's in the eighteen hundreds, the nineteen thirties, or nineteen nineties, to help us determine the best path forward in shaping our town. We're trying to keep building bridges between the past and the present. We accomplish this with our robust programming, community engagement, expanding archive, and keeping it open free for access to all, plus sharing our educational heritage garden as another way to examine and celebrate our past. Heritage tourism brings about seven billion dollars into the Florida economy, which is encouraging news for Delray Beach. Thank you all for helping us invest in our, in protecting our historic places and the legacy of cultures that create them. Our Historical Society is one such historical place. It's a vibrant center for education and research, bringing together multiple generations of all backgrounds and interests. We interact with nearly ten thousand five hundred people during the year through our programming and events on and off-site. When we first visited you, we visited you last year in the middle of summer, we held our History and Nature Summer Camp. Campers enjoyed exploring local history, engaged in a variety of nature crafts, created their own miniature archive, and learned about Florida native habitats. They also toured the archive and asked great questions. All four of our history exhibits and archive center services were open all summer. When fall arrived, students and schools returned, as well as a variety of group tours, visiting businesses, family reunions, and garden tours. We create curated and unique experiences for each group based on age, educational goals, time, and we always include an outdoor garden component. We had a record number of student visits this past year and hope to increase this next year. Visitors have responded positively to the addition of the garden tour component. Learning history through nature is powerful and resonates with all ages. We celebrated the Historical Society's sixtieth birthday and Kason Cottage's one-hundredth birthday this past year. The town really attended with such wonderful enthusiasm. We had a barbecue, live music, a pineapple, a pineapple cake donated by local chefs. The Historical Society's founder, Ethel Sterling Williams', grandson, William Williams, as well as Kason family grand niece, took part in the cake cutting. We welcomed back the IRC, the Institute for Regional Conservation, for their Do Good Delray Chamber of Commerce fundraising event. It was a really great night. The IRC is one of our valued local partners with a mission to protect, restore, and manage biodiversity in our area. Our Cottage Book Club enjoyed a second year and is still going strong this summer. Our Elder Circle is enjoying its eleventh year, though sadly, we lost some of our beloveds this past year. Our tenth Heritage Lecture Series launched in the fall, and we covered such topics as the civil rights movement in Delray Beach, women politicking politely, breaking barriers, wiki-watching in Florida tourism, Florida's film and television history, the surfing history of Delray, and Theodore Pratt, a Florida writer's life. We also offered a full season of sold-out garden lectures in partnership with the Swinton Community Growing Project on a variety of local gardening and sustainability topics. We launched our new historic walking tours of Delray Beach, starting out with the history of A-1A and the beach. All of our tours sold out within a day, so we're working on expanding our tour location offering and resources for the coming year. We brought back history happy hours, where we settle into a special location in Delray, shown here as the Colony Hotel, gathering around, sharing history and stories. It's a lot of fun and engages the community in a unique way. In addition, we continue our off-site presentations in schools, homeowners' associations, and community organizations throughout the year at a rate of one to three per month. Community connectivity continues to be a focus, introducing new people to what we're all about. We participated in Leadership Delray. We hosted community greening twice this year for tree giveaways. We had a lot of fun at Art and Jazz. Here you can see our pop-up exhibit, One Hundred Years of School Spirit. This was such a fun night, where people gathered, saw themselves, friends and family in the exhibit, with lots of laughter and memories that were shared. We also created a pop-up exhibit for the concourse de elegance called Getting Around in Old Delray, and it featured all modes of transportation in Delray going back to the eighteen hundreds, so people really enjoyed it. We helped sponsor and provide content for the Preservation Trust Legos Build Historic Delray. We welcomed Delray's TEDx Girl Trek for a tour. This program focused on social change through civic engagement. We had a really great time hosting one of the Chamber of Commerce's Cock, Contacts and Cocktails Event. We introduced people to our campus, signed up new members. We created another pop-up exhibit on the gladiola farming story of Delray Beach where we participated, while we participated in the Delray Fair on our campus. We sold nostalgic gladiola flowers, local honey, and other gifts, with all of our history exhibits open for free visits. For the holidays, we held our annual Holiday Jingle and Mingle Party to thank our sponsors and members. And in the spirit of offering something new to the community, we created a holiday luncheon shop as a fundraiser for the garden, providing the local retail community an opportunity to set up pop-up shops. The event included a catered lunch as part of the ticket price. Our history exhibits and gift shop were open, and it was a really lovely, sunny, and successful day. We welcomed the Achievement Center again for an Easter holiday event. Our friend Kay Johnson from the library read Peter Rabbit to the kids, sorry, Kay for the picture, and then enjoyed a craft activity and toured the garden. We're finally so proud to have finally cut our ribbon on phase one of the Legacy Brick Project. Everyone who purchased a brick attended and enjoyed an ice cream social and saw their commemorative brick for the first time. We're on to phase two now, so if you've not bought your brick, it's not too late. Just contact us. Show and tell. Mayor Carney? I'm especially proud to report on behalf of our amazing archive team, Kaylee and Tom, how much we've accomplished this year in the archiving and preservation areas of our organization. We invested in a new overhead scanner and a new upscale cataloging software. Delray's newspapers are now digitized as searchable PDFs and indexed by keyword. This makes it easy for us to discover new information and understand how national and regional issues were covered locally. We have scanned fragile and out-of-print local history books. New preservation materials have been purchased and utilized to organize our photo collection and rehouse really special collections, including the Ladies Improvement History and Artifacts. We are currently working on our extensive aerial photography collection with detailed descriptions. This will help us assist in future research projects for the city, project planners, preservationists, and environmentalists interested in the growth and changes in our area. We received amazing donations from local families, which we have accessioned into the archive. Type doesn't allow me to share all those, so please, 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 come by and visit the archive. You'll have a really great time. We've completed several oral histories alongside Florida Atlantic University, the Old Davy Schoolhouse Museum, the Boca Raton Historical Society, and Spady Museum, with students completing several projects in Delray's. with students completing several projects on Delray's agricultural history. This included interviews with the Bowman family and the McMurrayan family on our campus. The oral histories, transcripts and more will be available to view by the end of 2025. In addition, we have participated in several This Place Matters videos with the city. Our internship program is going strong. We've welcomed two new university interns this year. Our blog is expanding in popularity. This year we took readers on deep dives into topics such as the life of George H. Green, a Delray Beach pioneer, the history of the Delray Beach Golf Club, prohibition, a look back at the historical society's 60 years and how a critically eroded Delray Beach became the best beach in Florida. We invite you to visit our blog page. There's tons of fascinating and interesting insight and storytelling to learn from and it's really great cocktail information. One archive project that we're really proud of this year to share is the Historical Marker Project with PEB Capital. After many months of collaboration, all the historic structures in Sunday Village will include a historic monument and there will also be a series of chronological monuments along the pathways, taking people on a journey through time from the 1800s to the 1950s, mirroring the timeline surrounding the Sunday family, Delray history and important pioneers. I'm almost done. We prioritized our heritage garden maintenance, working with our vendors and garden club volunteers who work year-round. This one-acre outdoor classroom continues to be an asset for Delray with five native habitats. One of the larger projects we completed this year was in the Pollinator. We graded the land, allowing for proper hydration and we built a frame and it's now thriving with tons of butterflies and hummingbirds. We take great pride in our campus. Our staff and board and volunteers completed additional maintenance and improvement projects, including installing a new waste storage area, cleaning gutters, painting touch-ups and installing enhanced lighting systems, installing new sod and fixing broken areas of our pathways. The season culminated in our fourth annual Garden Fundraiser, Twilight in the Garden. Eleven of the area's most wonderful restaurants donated food and creative libations. We raised $61,000 and we're really thankful to everyone who attended. We do this because it's our legacy and our mission and it was established by our predecessors. We have a really exciting year ahead and we would love to tell you more about it. And how we do this is through a variety of fundraising initiatives and our important outreach keeps us thriving, but the primary reason is the historical society's engaged and committed Board of Governors, our passionate staff, some of them are here today, and Mike, our president, is here. Mike Cruz, our president, is here today, and the support from the community. So if we have met your expectations, we respectfully are seeking a total funding amount at our current level of $100,000 for 2025, 2026. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Casal, any questions? Commissioner Burns?
No questions.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner Long?
I missed the legacy brick cutting, but I'm coming to visit my two bricks.
And they're still doing them. This is Phase 2. Ample opportunity for everyone here to get their brick.
Thank you, Mayor Carney, for cutting the ribbon too, by the way.
I was gonna say that was the best photo that I saw in the whole group. Any comments?
Nailed it. Amazing slides, Winnie. Best slides I've ever seen.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Winnie. Last, but certainly not least, Michael Banta from the Delray Beach Public Library.
Well, I'm Winnie. I'm living. What's coming up here? Okay, welcome. Good afternoon. My name is Michael Banta. I'm the Executive Director of the Delray Beach Public Library. Is it this coming August? I've been serving this library for 31 years. In this presentation, I'm going to show you the value our library has to the city and to the people of Delray Beach. The library is an essential service. Like every free public library is to every community, our library is essential to the health and well-being of our city. The benefits are long-term, providing our citizens and every generation a guided path forward to a happier and a better life. A free public library. Our materials, our services, our professional expertise, our help, everything is free to anyone and everyone that comes through our doors. Allow me to quantify what that means with some figures. If our patrons had to pay for all the materials they checked out last year, it would have cost them collectively approximately $3.3 million. If a patron wished to subscribe for access to our online databases, which are free, it would cost that individual $26,000 a year. But of course, the joy and commitment and contentment one finds in a public library is a verified citadel of verifiable information is beyond measure and beyond price. Here we go, Jeff. Oh, yeah. Here we see in this slide some of the major highlights in the history of our library. We were founded by the Ladies Improvement Association, yay, in 1913, which consisted them of 40 women. Each donated a book from their private collection to start our first public collection, 40 women and 40 books. Since 1950, the citizens of Delray Beach have received excellent library service through a private-public partnership between the city of Delray Beach and the library. We circulated over 222,198 materials last year and nearly 193,000 people came through our doors. People came to our reference desk for help 61,900 times. We have over 131,000 items in our physical collection and nearly a million items in our streaming and digital collections. Shown here is our robust social media and programming presence. We had 2,524 programs last year with an attendance of over 13,500. We have over 135 community partners for education, programming and literacy outreach. Our library and the Go Golf Cart continue to make inroads into communities, helping to narrow that digital divide. Last year, our library hosted over 744 programs for adults with an attendance of 3,700. The TTIL Program, Technology Training and Instruction Lab, is designed to train adults and teens in the latest cutting-edge technology, podcasting, 3D enlarged format printing and our state-of-the-art recording studio, which is increasingly popular. Our Children's Department continued its long legacy of excellent programming. Last year, we had 679 programs for children. Our teen librarian had over 223 programs last year, all programs focusing on teens with attendance of over 1,200. Coming in the fall and winter '25 and '26, new carpeting on the second floor and new furniture in the children's library, both projects coming out of our fundraising efforts and private funding. I spoke earlier about our library's benefit to the community financially. And this slide explains another important piece to that economics benefits picture. Prior to 1967, there was no formal vehicle for funding libraries. In 1967, the Florida Legislature created the Palm Beach County Taxing District, which currently imposes a tax rate, a millage rate of .5491. But Delray Beach is exempt from this tax because our city funds our library directly. If the city did not fund the library directly, the additional taxes for the citizens of Delray Beach would be $9.7 million a year. $9.7 million a year, that's a pretty good partnership, I think. Pretty effective. So, on to our budget request. This year, the library is asking for a 3.2% increase, which comes to an increased request of $55,396. The good news is, over the last three years, we've been asking the commission for much larger increases of 6% per year to address our severe salary and staffing deficits. I'm happy to report because of the city's funding over the last three years, the library is now at competitive levels for salary and staffing with neighboring libraries. The bleeding has stopped. The year before last, we lost three professionals to neighboring libraries because of salary issues. Last year, none, not one. So I applaud the commission for your understanding of the library's need. Your approved increases have paid off exactly as they were meant to. I ask for 3.2% this year because we don't want to lose ground so that our library can stay competitive. We've reached the shore after many, many years of treading water. We are now in that competitive range. We're actually in the competitive range of salaries and staffing. Low, middle, but competitive. So your improved increases have paid off wonderfully and we can't afford to fall back. I must add that this figure, $1,786,537, does not include the $443,000 coming over from the CRAA guide, which is being absorbed into the city funding this year. This money represents 20% of our overall budget and its loss will be devastating. I mention this only to express my gratitude of how grateful I am the city has taken over this funding. It's such a clear indication that our city understands and values library service. About library service and what makes it so important? I think of a quote from the theologian and writer William Barclay. "There are two great days in a person's life, the day we're born and the day we discover why." It's that discovering why part, why we're born, that can be so tricky. We librarians can be of some help with that. There's a voice that speaks to us, an inner voice that begins when we're very, very small, very little, and it never stops talking to us our whole life, ever. And that voice speaks to us. It says, "I was born for something. I was not born just to eat and sleep, survive and die. There's a place for me in this world, just for me, and a purpose. I was born to pursue happiness and to be something." There's no institution in this city, in this country, in this world that answers that voice like a public library. A public library is designed for the self-discovery and guiding one in this path of personal destiny. By public design, it is the place where the journey of self-realization becomes an active revelatory force of vast power. Since our partnership, library and city, began in 1950, roughly 5 million people have come through our doors. 5 million people all coming to make their lives happier in some capacity, better and happier, hoping to find some path forward, someplace. This is the legacy that we have together, city and library, and we can be very, very proud of it. Thank you, Mayor, city officials, commissioners. It's always a great privilege to speak with you. And I thank you for your time today. And I want to thank my board of directors for coming out today. I work for one of the best board of directors in the city and I'm very, very grateful to you guys too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Burns?
No questions, but thank you, Micah, for your presentation and you know I love libraries, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Long?
No, thanks for everything you do. Great presentation, as always.
Commissioner Casal?
Yes, I'm also. I just, I love the library, the feeling you get when you walk in. I'm still into books. I'm trying to embrace the audio, but I love touching the pages and feeling the books. But, you know, every time you speak in front of us, I have so much respect for you because your passion for what you're doing, your commitment to our city and to the library and understanding its value and really exemplifying it in your words. I really appreciate you and I'm glad we're partners. Our residents benefit greatly from our library.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes the presentations. We now have public comment. So any member of the public wishing to speak, please come to the lectern, give your name and address for the record. You will each have three minutes.
Marjorie Waldo, Arts Garage, and I felt left out because my nonprofit family was here and they did such an incredible job. I will keep you about 30 seconds. Madam, would you be kind enough to take one and pass? I have prepared especially for you... Somebody's brick is still here, by the way, Winnie. I have prepared especially for you, there you go, a photo collection of the work we've done in the last year. And while we do not receive separate city funding up until now, we are hoping to be part of the city's overall budget next year as you transition to owning those CRA dollars. And I just want to remind you that we have done a lot of what we've done in that booklet this year because of the dollars from the CRA and from your support. We have 40,000-plus followers on social media, 20,000-plus subscribers to our eBlast newsletters and 30,000-plus patrons of the arts who walk in our doors annually. We are working hard for all of you and our city every day. Thank you for everything you do for us, for me, for Arts Garage. And I'm gonna say it for them too, for them too. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Is there anything else in front of you?